Well, Mayor wants a regular city council meeting. At this time I'd ask that we stand for a prayer by former council member Dudley Evans, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
As always, Mayor Jolly, thank you for the privilege. This is our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for a great day given us. What a time we are now involved in in spring and all the regrowth and everything. Life has come back, Father, and we thank you for that. As we pray for life, we pray for the blessings of this council tonight. Mayor Jolly, all city staff members and our, of course, residents of our great city, we ask you, God, for your blessings upon it. Protect our law enforcement, first responders, all of our city workers, and everyone that takes part, Father, we just thank you for that. Again, go with our councils and as they deliberate on these ordinances and resolutions and budget amendments and all these things, Lord, that your hand to be upon them and your guidance for the betterment of our city. We thank you today for it. Thank you most of all for salvation, and we pray you, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Bryant.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Councilman McCollum.
Here.
Councilwoman Reed.
Councilwoman Wilson here.
Mayor Jolly.
Here. Let the record reflect that all are present for Councilman Reed. Next on the agenda is getting approval for March 2024. Are there any additions or substitutions? If not, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say no. Next on the agenda is a presentation of approval of financials. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Councilwoman Wilson.
I yield to Ms. Ruby. You have a copy of all the bank statements in your packet and the general fund at the end that's marked. We had $1,804,305.42 emergency in reserve, $61,928.18. We should be able to deplete that in this coming month. We heard that we might get both our tall hosts tomorrow. They've been on order for about a year. Payroll, $182,335.84. Interstate Street Day, $329,575.47. Capital Projects, ARCO, $129,738.24. Hopefully that'll be depleted too in the next few weeks. Large Drug Fund, $44,978.79. The Confidential Growth Fund, $5,077.54. Ringtones Bank Loan, that's the grant match for the community center, $525,487.70. And then the Rockwood Industrial Award, $51,122.11, or a total of $3,134,543.29. You also have the bank statements. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. You have a copy of every check that was written in the month of March. I'll also answer any questions on any of those. At the end of the year, it seems like we get more and more things that are due to pay, so you'll see that for the next couple of months. You also have a copy of the summary financials for all the departments, and everyone's doing well. We've tried to cut back spending. Every year we're a little lenient on May and Jim, but we're trying to stick to it a little better this year and cut the departments off, except for the things that they have to have. So the budget looks good. All department heads do a fine job. Landa does a fine job, and I always weigh on our finances.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Nothing.
Councilman Anderson.
Nothing.
Any further discussion or comment on financials? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next is committee reports from council. Start on this end. Have nothing.
For Parks and Rec, we had a good opening ceremony. We got, it's going well, the Little League Baseball and softball. We had our first Main Street Monday. It was good. We had a good turnout, beautiful weather. We've got another Main Street coming up, May the 12th, from 5:00 to 8:00 again, and Aaron Carter will be the band this month. He's from here in Rockwood. And Library, I missed that meeting. I apologize. I had a golf match, so I don't really have anything, other than I know the library's doing well.
It's all down here in the fort. It's coming out.
Next is public comment. All we ask is that you state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes or less. We'll start over here. In the center.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good evening, you all. I am Denise Gray, the president of Vice Global Community Outreach, and we only had one thing we wanted to bring to the city council's attention is the summer programs for the week. I've been looking into grants maybe that the city can use. I'm not sure what Park and Recreation have for like use, but we would like to partner with the council or someone or committee to help kind of get the kids staying off the street. It's already getting bad. It ain't nowhere near, you know, time for school to get out. I was gonna get the chief, the speeding up, wilder and strain is out of control. I mean, we can't even get out the driveway without almost hitting somebody. Ain't nobody stopping at the corner with, with strain and wow. I mean, they're just bypassing. And y'all remember, we have elderly people right there. Any kind of loud noise, they get, they, you know, lose it, you know? So if we could, I know Chief does a good job. We had started where they were, they were actually sitting over there in the church space chapel right there, but I've noticed it lately, just because I've been cleaning up brush, I've noticed that that has gotten bad again. So if we could just get some help with that, and then if you could put me in the right direction, Vice Global, so I can get someone either on the council or one of the committees to slip me now, so I get to see you back there, so we can go over this, so we can get these kids something. I have some games, board games that have been donated. I'd be happy to give the center, of course, to give to kids so they have. When my number of people come over, kids come during the day, I know they come to play basketball, those are the day, but you know, we could have these games and stuff for them to go in the other rooms. If we need somebody who'll have to come out to City Bus, if we need somebody to volunteer, I've got a couple of people who can give candy some time if we need it, okay?
One issue, I have mayors who are gonna start construction, and maybe those of the centers closed.
Okay.
I'll work with you on it.
Okay, all right, let me know. Thank you. You are doing such a beautiful job.
First, my name is Roberta Dennis. I live down here, 400 block of Wchewilla. Couple of things that I wanted to bring up today. There's a, on Trinity Street, some of you probably already seen it, there's a rail car there, and they move it, my understanding, I talked to someone who knows a lot about it, lives nearby, basically they move the car, the rail car twice a week. Well, I have a picture here that shows the wood beam is about this far from a complete drop-off where it was stopped, and it is in the city. That was a question, if it wasn't, it's in the city. It's right, if you know the farm of Bruce Buckley, his address is 812 North Trinity. Is that one of those cars come down? Now, today was one of those strange days that actually wasn't right on it, but it's been on it for months, probably three months at least. It seemed like it seemed to be the favorite place for park lately, but it's completely washed out. You've got two feet where this big thing will come tumbling down on the road or on the man, old man's house. He's, can't say old too much, I'm in the 70s too, but he is wheelchair-bound, so he can't move real quick if something were to happen, and he's been in the hospital, and he does not need a big rail car coming down now. My understanding is this is the Norfolk Southern Line that's involved with that. It's moved twice a week. Right now it's moved, but it wasn't then yesterday, and I've got pictures of it.
I think it's on my little horse. Is that the wrong, is that correct?
She's talking about my horse, the horse that was the hating ghost in Norfolk Southern.
It's part of the North, it is part of the Norfolk Southern Line.
Yeah, I know exactly where he's talking, but we've made them both aware of the situation. I don't know what they're doing about it, but we have made them aware of it.
And it's been that way, it's been washed out since that big, big rain here, I don't know, a couple of months ago. I should know, because that rain, that's another thing I want to mention real quick. This has to do with the flooding. I did talk to Becky about giving a grant, and I'd like to meet with her about that since the minute I turned. I'll discuss it with Mayor, I know some of that's on private property, so I don't know. We can maybe talk about it. Well, it's a, my understanding is there was a federal takeover of the all streams and stuff, TBA and all that stuff, so it's a federal issue that could be resolved, and we could get federal funds from that. Just want to mention that. I do know that's a fact, because when I was in rural state, you had to pay extra money on flood insurance, and it brought upon upon those actions. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the center? Anyone, anyone over here on the right? That'd be the last opportunity to speak, unless myself or a council member yields for floor two. Old business ordinance 1316, an ordinance adopting the fee schedule for services provided by the building inspector. I open it for a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on the ordinance 1316? I'll close the floor. Ordinance 1316, we're up to will the council.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman McCollum.
Nothing.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next, ordinance 1317, an ordinance to amend section 9-301 of the Rockwood Municipal Code to define taxi cab business. I'm opening the floor for a public hearing on taxi cab. Any discussion? I'm gonna close the floor for ordinance 1317, public hearing. What's will the council on ordinance 1317?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bryant. Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman Bryant?
None.
Any further discussion on municipal code on taxi cab? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Here, or yes. Sorry, I was in the zone.
Yes.
I'm here also, in case anybody's wondering.
Under new, that's all the old business, under new business, ordinance 1318, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of Rockwood, Tennessee, to define, the definition to define a tiny home. What will be done was, took exactly what the state of Tennessee has written as the definition. What's will the council on ordinance 1318?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Davis, second by Councilman McCollum. Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman McCollum?
No.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. That'll be back next month for a public hearing, second reading. Next is ordinance 1319, an ordinance amending zoning matters to the city of Rockwood by rezoning a property at 460 South Kingston Avenue, designated from R2 to R4 multifamily. What's will the council? This is all VFW building.
Yeah, oh.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilman McCollum. Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman McCollum?
No.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Next is Resolution 2515, a resolution approving community development partners to provide professional ministry services to Rockwood Water, Sewer, and Gas in complying with the SRF program that we approved this back in September. This just follow up on that. What's will the council?
This is paid out of the grant.
Motion by Councilman Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wilson. Councilman Bryant?
No.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Nothing.
Any further discussion or comments? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next, Resolution 2516, a resolution approving the five-year update for the 2020 10-year parks and recreation plan. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman Anderson?
No.
Any further discussion?
I know that Kenny and Becky worked really hard on this, so I appreciate.
Yeah, there's a lot, had a lot of meetings.
Over five months.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, guys, for all you've done on this. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next is Resolution 2517, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to file suit concerning property at 131 North Douglas. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Councilwoman Wilson?
I think this is good to get that property, you know, I know it's been for a long time, it's been an issue, so.
Councilman Davis?
No.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next, you see this, we got this map up here. We've been working for several months in the planning commission, trying to define our urban growth boundaries. We're wanting to expand them. We're trying to capture the airport as part of this. Maybe one day we can annex the airport into the city. This'll be the first step, but hopefully we can get this approved tonight. Resolution 2518, a resolution amending the urban growth boundary behalf of Rockwood, Tennessee. It requires two public hearings. I'm opening four for a public hearing. Anyone like to speak on the ordinance 2518?
I think it's a long process, isn't it?
With this, with the flat rock coming in, you know, everybody's thinking about it in terms of it being able to bring industry to here, me and myself, for the simple reason that anything that we can attach ourselves to that very, very big business, I mean, it's gonna be supposedly one of the top five racing tracks in the world. It's, it's not, unfortunately, it's not for the regular racers from around here, which is kind of sad, but there will be a lot of money, obviously, that's gonna be coming through, and they'll be flying in, 'cause the people that are paying these large fees and paying for these upfront, have paid for big units. I think they've already sold out on the units up there. It has, my understanding is that, for example, that most of these units are gonna have like cars, race cars underneath and then the living quarters above, so anything that could be done in terms of the airport and connecting to Rockwood, it should help around here for sure, is my opinion. Sure wish we could get something, other kind of racing around here that some of us could more afford.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on Resolution 2518? I'll close the hearing. Resolution 2518, what's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Councilwoman Wilson?
Uh, nothing.
Councilman McCollum?
No.
Any further discussion? I will say this takes another reading from us, then it goes to wrong county, then it has to go to Cumberland County, Warden County. There's a lot of steps in this. Hopefully it happens, though. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Resolution 2518, a resolution allowing the mayor to sign final draft agreement and consent to lease all deed of trust concerning the airport hangar project. What this will do will allow them to secure their financing for the hangar complex. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So this is important that we get this done, hopefully. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bryant. Councilwoman Wilson?
This is another one of those long-term coming things, so, but it's happening.
Councilman Bryant?
Okay.
Any further discussion? I think this is huge, and I'm excited about seeing what, what the future holds of airport. It's real exciting. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Resolution 2520, a resolution authorizing implementation of smart gov building permits and toll enforcement software. What this will do is allow people to go online and get their permits, is that correct?
That's part of it. We, we don't know if we're gonna implement that, but it does have a part that we can do. What it's gonna do is go create a, allow us to create a database of all the permits that we've issued in the past 10 years or so. That way we have a, we can go back and look, see if there's some issue that we've had at a certain piece of property, and so we'll have a kind of a, but it'll, it'll give us a good database as far as that, but the other thing, it's gonna make my job a whole lot easier, because it'll be all electronic. Instead of me having to do a lot of papers, I'll be able to do it electronically, and even if, if I'm not there at the site, somebody can send me a picture and I can actually approve the permit, or I can approve the inspection just by sitting on site. So it's, it's gonna be a really advantage to me.
And it includes codes, so all the property violations, all that Ricky Lawson does will be part of it, too.
Order 2520, what's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Councilman Bryant?
No.
Councilman McCollum?
No.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Under other business, approval of purchase of two dogs, Durangos, have the budget and the state contract pricing, and the price on the Durangos are $47,817, is that correct? What's will the council?
Pay out of this year's boys' budget.
Yeah, what he's got left, right?
Yes.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second? Second by Councilman Davis. Councilwoman Wilson?
If we've got the money and he needs it, I say we get it.
Councilman Davis? Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next is approval of purchase mower for parking rec, have the current parking rec budget through Sourcewell. The price on the mower is $14,625, and that's good, McCollum. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McCollum. Councilman Davis?
No.
Councilman McCollum?
No.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson.
Yes.
Councilman Bryant.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman McCollum.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson.
Yes.
Mayor Jolly.
Yes. Next is approval of purchase aluminum traffic light cabinet for Rockwood Street and Front Avenue. What's will the council?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Bryant, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Wilson. Councilman Bryant?
We need it, so let's get it.
Councilwoman Wilson?
That light is awful. I go through there, and Becky, I get to work at 7:00 in the morning, so I'm usually, I go through there and Becky, I get to work at seven in the morning, so I'm usually, I think, one of the first ones to see that it's not acting right. And so I would love that this light's getting fixed, 'cause I text Becky, the light's not working again.
We've done a bunch of them, we need them twice.
We've dealt with that.
Yeah.
Light for the grand.
Let's go to.
Yeah, let's start with that.
Any further discussion?
How about, how about hit a trooper there the other day because of that, that would've been bad.
Yeah, yeah.
Councilman Anderson? Councilman Bryant?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Conal Callow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Jolly?
Yes.
As everyone knows, we put a committee together last month for a hotel study and hopefully tonight we got a recommendation for us, uh, that we can approve. Is there any recommendations on the hotel study?
Yeah, we, uh, April, I think it was on the committee, April and I and Becky, we, uh, we went through eleven people, there is interest in this area, all of them agreed that with flat rock coming in, the marina, the ballpark being used as much, we have a use for it and the high, and the foreline giving you so much, uh, we got it down to two people, HVS of Nashville and Woodworth Corp Group, uh, Georgia, we all agreed that we need to go with Woodworth Corp Group because, uh, they sort of had the same vision we did, they didn't, didn't have to be a name ran hotel, he said he could find a top brand for somebody that would fit our needs and, uh, he can handle it himself, he can put us first for it, the other people, uh, you know, they had jobs all over the country and out of the country, uh, he just, he might keep fit as the best, so we recommend Woodworth.
So do you like to put that in a form of a motion that we accept Woodworth Corp's proposal?
Yes. I recommend or that we take Woodworth Corp Group.
That we have a motion that we accept Woodworth Corp's, there's a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bryant?
I'm gonna speak in a second, um, I'd like to bring up about, what about, um, the, um, being, um, bid, is there, aren't you bidding that?
Yeah, we, uh, we took bids. Councilman Conal Callow, any further discussion?
Uh, I just hope everybody's agree on this, uh, it's big, I think, 'cause of flat rocks, I think, will put it over the top of the airport, so I think we need to just.
Councilman Bryant?
I agree.
Any further discussion or comments? Did I get that right, the way we done that?
It's a professional service, but we did put it out for proposals, we got eleven, the two final ones they considered wasn't leased and they were both the same amount of money, so.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Bryant?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Conal Callow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Jolly?
Next on the agenda is quarterly budget amendments. If we could get a motion and second, we could yield the floor, Ms. Ruppin?
I make a motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Wilson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Councilwoman Wilson?
I yield, Ms. Ruppin.
So every year toward the end, we have countless of many months that we move money around for different reasons, and I walk through every single one of these unless you have a question. Most of them are within their own budget, so as long as they stay within their own budget, that's fine with us as long as they're spending it in the right way. That first one, uh, is something we do need to talk about, so Walmart filed a suit with the property assessor's office or a complaint on their taxes for the last four or five years. And so they finally got a settlement and we had to back pay them twenty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So the only place to take that money from was from property taxes in our fund balance. So we did have to give that money back and I think the county had to give them back over a hundred thousand. So that is something to take note of. Uh, general government is just within the same budget, police just moving money, uh, from one line to another. The next one is fire, we got a fire grant for turnout gear, that's adding that grant to the budget. Uh, not a lot of surprises right there. Animal control, very minor, we had to put a little bit extra into shelter fees. Uh, the building inspector, very little there, we, he had to buy new code books, uh, so we moved some money from to buy those books. Uh, streets, uh, very legal there, the garage, uh, we had to, we increased the wages there in health insurance. In recreation, uh, we, it was the first year, uh, we started on that striping machine in the middle the year before. And then in this first year, we got any more regular than we expected, so we added that. Uh, we had to sell material, we sold snow trucks and different stuff, and then we had the Dixie youth proceeds from the tournament we had last July. And that's the main reason he could buy that mower tonight is because we had that tournament and was able to sell stuff down there that wasn't being used. So that's really the only reason he could get a mower. In golf, uh, we moved the money to pay for that, uh, capital projects, that mower that we just got in a couple of weeks ago, that money was a fund balance and we moved that, that money to buy that mower. Let's see where I'm at here. In the library, uh, very, very minor amendments there. In the broadband, that's money that we get from TBA and from ET-EBAs helps us match some of those grants. So Rockwood Electric is being good to work with, Kendall and I have done several of these TBA connected community grants. And most of that money in that line put new cameras and new fiber at the complex and REU did a lot of that work for free. And then without this money and a little bit more money, we're gonna be getting, that's putting in the new lights at the new pickleball courts and basketball courts. So without those broadband or community, uh, connected community grants, you call it, and then getting the match through Rockwood Electric, there's no way we could do those projects. So we're very appreciative of that. So that's what that is, and we probably haven't done one of them before the end of the year if we're lucky. That service, that just shows, remember when we got the loan for the grant match? He said the interest will pay the interest payments, well, it is, so that twelve thousand is interest that we got in, that twelve thousand's interest we're paying out, so we kind of made it. And then State Street, uh, repair and maintenance, we've done some new streetlights and some other things, so we've just moved money from fund balance down to repair and maintenance in streets. And that's all, and we'll have a few more in May and then we'll have the very end of the year in June, but by doing these now prevents a lot of that at the very end. So you got any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Nothing.
Councilman Anderson? Any further discussion on quarterly budget amendments? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes.
Councilman Bryant?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Conal Callow?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Yes.
Mayor Jolly?
Yes.
Next is, uh, comments from council, we'll start with Councilman Bryant?
My thanks, I wanted to come out tonight and, um, thank you. Employees doing a good job for us, Becky and Belinda, of course, they did an excellent job, so I commend everybody for the good job they're doing, thank you.
I appreciate everybody that always comes out every month.[1669.75]